I'd like to call the meeting in order. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Hal Glanville.
Here.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Varvo.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of the members know before you vote. I made a motion to approve an amended agenda, and Misty's going to keep me on track on this one. We're making an amendment to the current claims on page one. Under South Dakota Governmental Human Resources, we'll be adding Bob Nelson Jr. to the City of Hot Springs South Dakota Governmental Human Resources annual membership. So that will be two memberships. So the new amount will be $197,761.39. We'll be making two changes to the 2023 payable claims. First one is on page four to Wally Cotro. The new amount, that amount goes down. The new amount will be $263.81. The second one is on page five, Muth Electric. That amount goes down. The new amount will be $1,620.23. So that brings the new total for 2023 payable claims to $184,224.18. Did I get those right, Misty?
Sounds right to me.
And then the last item will be to add a new business, item M. And that will be to appoint Carl Hall to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term, 2024 through 2026, with him replacing the vacant seat left by Steve Weenya. So we made three changes. One, adding our city administrator to current claims, our membership, and decreasing two amounts on payable claims, one for Wally Cotro and one for Muth Electric, and then adding a new business, item M.
Go.
Go for it.
I make a motion to approve what the mayor just said.
Second.
No, I'll do this. I'll do this, Travis. Make a motion to approve an amended agenda in the current claims amended to $197,761.39. And in the 2023 payable claims, the new amount would be $184,224.18. Adding also new item, new business, item M, appointing Carl Hall to the Historic Preservation Commission for a year, 2024 through 2026.
Second.
Discussion?
Counsel, for your information, the Muth Electric bill had sales tax that was removed, and the tax rebate form completed by the Director of Equalization had an incorrect amount listed for Wally for his residential tax rebate that we were able to confirm was incorrect tonight, so thought we'd correct it before issuing the judge.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the December 18th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 18th council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $88,661.64.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve an amended current claims, new total $197,761.39.
Make a motion to approve the current claims to the amended amount of $197,761.39.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve an amended 2023 payable claims, new amount $184,224.18.
Make a motion to approve the 2023 payable claims, the amended amount being $184,224.18.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims of $6,814.11.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public. Do we have anybody that'd like to address the council tonight? All right. Council updates. Our first council update is from Public Works Engineer Tracy Bastian. Tracy is not able to be with us tonight. He's traveling. He did prepare an update he wanted me to share with you, so let me read that for you. "The utility work is continuing at the intersection of North River Street and Minnacotta Avenue. On Thursday, January 4th, the Minnacotta Bridge will be closed to traffic in order to allow the work to be completed to install the new section of the Minnacotta sewer main. At this point, the closure is anticipated to be for two weeks, but this could be affected by inclement weather. Work is continuing on the Sixth Street realignment with concrete work continuing as weather allows. It is important to note that the concrete work is very affected by the weather, and a period of below-average temperatures could pause the work. There will be continued work for the preparation of installation of the support towers for the suspended sidewalk. The footings for the new pedestrian bridge at the north end of Centennial Park is also anticipated to be underway in the near future. At this point, we are waiting for confirmation of when the suspended sidewalk support towers will be delivered and installed. Various work will continue as weather allows during the next two months." Any questions? We've scheduled for a council update from the Executive Director, Andrea Powers of Shed Co. She's not able to be with us tonight and asked to move her update to the next council meeting. So, Misty, if you could bump her to the next one? That brings us to personnel. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through J?
I make a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through J.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And there are resolutions. Resolution A, Resolution 2024-1, 2024 Salary Wage Resolution. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-1, the 2024 Salary and Wage Resolution.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution Item B, Resolution 2024-2, 2024 Part-Time and Seasonal Hourly Rates of Pay.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-2, the 2024 Part-Time and Seasonal Hourly Rate of Pay.
Second.
That was hell.
I got it. Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And Resolution Item C, Resolution 2024-3, Designation of Depositories and Official Newspaper.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-3, Designation of Depositories and Official Newspaper.
Second.
Discussion?
I can't say enough how much I appreciate our local newspaper and working with them and how easy they make it. Have to say it every year, but it's worth it.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On to new business, new business, item A. Can I get a motion to set an election date as June 4th, 2024?
I make a motion to set the election date as June 4th, 2024, combining with Fall River County, the Hot Springs School District 23-2, the Town of Ulrichs, and the Ulrichs School District 23-3, and approve the combined election agreement as presented and prepared by Fall River County.
Second.
Discussion?
I can't say how much I appreciate you allowing us to combine for the elections. Please don't ever stop.
Has it been a bit since we've combined with Ulrichs?
When the county runs the election, which is every other year, if Ulrichs has a race, then they'll combine. So every year at the beginning, they're included in it, but by the time we get to the actual election date, any one of us could fall off if we don't have to have a election. And I think they often do.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item B, A Motion to Confirm the Intent of the City Council to Cover the Following Police Department Reserve Officer.
I make a motion to confirm the intent of City Council to cover the following Police Department Reserve Officer, unpaid volunteer for work comp purposes in 2024, Ryan Walls.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we only have one volunteer officer?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Is that different than a reserve officer?
That's what it is.
That's what it is, a reserve? Okay.
So this is just the intent to cover him? So he's covered for his volunteer work, right? Not paying, he's not under a workman comp claim right now?
He is covered under our workers comp, and you have to take this action every year and anytime anyone is added. So if we were to get new reserve officers, you'd take that action then, and then it's also a January 1, or beginning of January action you take every year to show your intent to cover those volunteer reserve officers under our workers comp.
So are you asking if he's under a workman's comp claim?
Yeah, it's not a claim. This is just our intent to cover him in case.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C, A Motion to Approve the 2024 Parades.
Make a motion to approve 2024 parades, Fourth of July Parade, Freedom Ride Parade, Hot Springs High School Homecoming Parade, December Parade of Lights, and the Hot Springs High School's Graduation Parade.
Second.
Larry, thank you. I hear three at once.
We all like a parade.
Yee-haw.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item D, A Motion to Approve Extending Contract 2022-6.
I make a motion to approve extending the contract 2022-6 between the City of Hot Springs and Battle Mountain Humane Society for the Animal Boarding Services in 2024, option year two.
Second.
Discussion?
Are we still having trouble with them and their contract as far as what they're supposed to be doing for us?
Yes. We'll be having that discussion with them.
Is this just boarding services? Because that was going to be my question, too.
No, it's all animal control services, and it's dogs and cats. It's not deer, raccoons, or snakes, or bats, or anything like that, but...
We had aggressive dog in our neighborhood, and we were told they don't handle us sometimes.
What's your name, sir, and your address, please?
Lucas Royals, 145 Mar 23rd.
Thank you, sir. Someone from Battle Mountain told you that?
Yeah.
All right.
It went on for a couple different days. Me, two of my neighbors both had issues. I know people that they've trapped the cats and told that they won't pay cats unless we make a donation that it's made a year so that they can re-release the cat, which doesn't really seem...
Conducive.
...to us, Ray, I don't know.
Yeah. So if you and I could get together so you can share with me who it was from Battle Mountain outside of the public that told you they didn't deal with aggressive dogs? And as I say, we've, we need to have a discussion with them. It's...
Because I also write up the public table. So I guess I would do my question. It was all encompassing, because I guess I don't understand what we're dealing with.
It's a fair question.
That was, I mirror his, his concerns. I understand our intent is to renew this contract, but I'm not okay if they're not going to be following what's on the contract, and to me, that's breach of contract.
It is. At this point, we don't have any means to begin doing the services to the city. We need to have a discussion with them, and...
And to me, I feel like that we're being extorted and blackmailed into agreeing to this. And those are my words. It doesn't mirror the councils. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I got one opposition.
Did we get one or two?
I have Huddleston and Glanville opposed, and Pratt.
We have five in favor. All the most, motion passes. New business, item E, Approve Extending Contract 2020-3.
Make a motion to approve extending contract 2022-6 between City of Hot Springs... Oh, sorry.
Three, three, three.
Wrong line. I would like to make a motion to approve extending contract 2020-3 between the City of Hot Springs and Jessica Luther for meter reading services in 2024, option year four.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item F, A Motion to Approve New Contract 2024-4.
I would like to make a motion to approve the new contract 2024-4 between the City of Hot Springs and Teresa Moss for Police Department $355.20 per month and City Hall $528 per month cleaning services in 2024. New contract necessary due to budgeted rate increases.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item G, A Motion to Approve a Platte of Tract NW and Tract TW.
This property is up at the Y, just past the Y of the truck bypass.
Can we go ahead and make a motion, then we'll discuss it?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve a platte of Tract Northwest located in the southwest quarter, northwest quarter of Section 23, and Tract TW located in the southeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 23, all in Tract 7 South, R5 East, BHM, Fall River County, South Dakota formerly Tract D, southwest quarter, northwest quarter, less lot H1, and Tract D, southeast quarter, northeast quarter, lot, less lot H1.
Second.
Now, would you like me to explain?
Discussion?
Please.
Yes, please, explain.
So this property is the Weenya property up past Baumgart's, just past the turnoff to the truck bypass, and essentially, they're moving... We see four lines there towards the point. They're moving the third line from the left over to the fourth line position. There's kind of a driveway that you can see on a satellite view, that there's a driveway, they're putting it on the other side of that. I think they're going to subdivide it or something between two people. So that's what we're looking at, and we're having a save. It's in county, but since it about city boundaries, we get a save, whether it's okay or not. And the planning and zoning approved it with no problems.
Are they also renaming the tracks?
I don't see that they are.
So they refer to them as formerly Tract D, two Tract Ds?
Formerly Tract, okay. Then, yes, they are.
So the two Tract Ds are becoming Tract NW and Tract TW?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation, Deb. That was...
Very good.
That was a challenge to try to figure out, looking at the plaque.
You had to be there.
I tried to look at that thing, and I tried to take a picture of it, draw it bigger, and I was like, no, I just can't.
Yeah. So, yeah, they're just moving the line over onto the other side of a driveway, essentially.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item H, A Motion to Approve a Platte of Benzema Tract.
Make a motion to approve a platte of the Benzema Tract of Block 43, Second Minnacotta addition to Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota formerly lots 18R through 23R, and lots 24 through 28.
Second.
So again, here, they're essentially getting rid of all of the little lines, the little lines, and combining, you'll see that Z shape between the upper part of the L. It's an upside-down L-shaped lot, and the Z combines that all together.
So the alley is going away completely?
It is vacated except for utilities.
Okay.
NP and Z's recommending it?
P and Z's recommending, yes.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item I, A Motion to Set a Public Hearing on January 16th, 2024, at 7:10 PM.
I make a motion to set a public hearing on January 16th, 2024, at 7:10 PM on the applications for retail on-off sale wine and cider, and retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from Moccasins Springs LLC doing business has The Dragonfly to be used at 1829 Minnacotta Avenue.
Second.
Discussion?
So I don't know if you all know Buffalo Dreamer, which is the restaurant inside Moccasins Springs, is moving out and going elsewhere to be announced later. And so the new restaurant taking its place will be called The Dragonfly.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item J, A Motion to Approve an Automatic Budget Supplement of $60,860.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $60,860 to the additional sales tax fund services and fees 212-21200-42200 for the Minnacotta Bridge replacement sign, design, engineering expenses, revenue received from VIT grant funding.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item K, A Motion to Approve a 2023 Automatic Budget Supplement of $2,996.97.
I'll make a motion to approve 2023 Automatic Budget Supplement of $2,996.97 to additional sales tax fund professional services 212-21200-42200 for construction administration and observation of the 10-unit teehanger. Reimbursement revenue of received, of received from AIP grant funding
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item L, A Motion to Approve a 2023 Automatic Budget Supplement of $64,334.79.
I make a motion to approve 2023 Automatic Budget Supplement of $64,334.79 to the water fund improvement other than building 602-43350-43300 for the sewer and water main replacement project. Grant reimbursement received from the CDVG grant number 1919-107-13.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our last new business item, or amended item M, is a motion to appoint Carl Hall to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Make a motion to appoint Carl Hall to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term from 2024 to 2026, with him replacing the vacant seat left by Steve Weenya.
Second.
Discussion?
We have a couple more slots available, right?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Yep.
How did Carl come to us?
Christine Heidebrink had talked with Carl. He stopped and chatted with me on Friday. His family are longtime residents of Hot Springs, and he's anxious about the opportunity to help us with our historic buildings.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So with the passing of that and the questions that both Deborah and Travis asked, a reminder to the public, if there's anyone else out there that would like to be on the Historic Preservation Preservation Commission, please let City Hall or myself know. We'd like at least two more on that commission. Let us know. Thank you. All right, on to committee reports. Administrative and Finance, JR. Melissa?
The next Admin Finance meeting will be January 8, 1 PM here at the Mueller Civic Center. All are welcome.
Thank you. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Airport Advisory meets this Thursday, January 4, 8:30 AM at the airport, and if I could, I'll just give you a quick update. The tee hangars are up, the doors are installed, electrical is being installed this week, so we've got some work to do on the aprons, so, and at the close of the meeting after we've adjourned, I've got an informal update that I'd like to provide you. Misty's already received it, but I'll give it to the rest of the council. Don't look at me that way. Are you sure, Bill?
I might give it now.
Trust me, Mr. Mayor. Not very far. Trust me.
Okay. Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Board meeting will next be held at 7 o'clock on Thursday, 7 o'clock PM Thursday, January 18, at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
They meet tomorrow, January 3, 5 PM here at the Mueller Center.
All right, thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will meet January 11, 2024, at noon at the plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation and Beautification, Larry, Linda?
The meeting tomorrow has been canceled. It will have been rescheduled for February 7 at 2 PM here at the Mueller Center. I'd like to add a note to this, still looking for cemetery board members, so put that message out there to replace the two that are gone.
You said February 7?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Planning and Zoning, Deborah?
Planning and Zoning met December 20 at City Hall. Present were Don Olsted, Allison Ritterbush, Dwight Weenya, Joni Hill, Wayne Higeman, myself, and Scott Soggy. Guests present were Tom Iverson, Jeff Smith of Grandview Trailer Park. Grandview, under new business, Grandview Trailer Park, there was a lengthy conversation about the proper setbacks and home-to-home spacing to the existing and future trailers brought into Grandview Trailer Park. And tonight, you approved the Benzumer plat revision to change the property to one parcel and eliminate the 11 25-foot-wide lots to one tract. And again, you approved tonight tract NW, tract TW, and tract TW interior lot line revision. And then, KTM Development, information on the previous presentation at City Hall from KTM and Associates, they shared information about a new multifamily housing development in the planning stages to be located on the south side of Highway 71 and adjacent to Hot Springs Ambulance Service and Helipad. They, the plat shows 12 duplex townhouses, 26 single homes, and a 15-unit apartment building being planned for that area.
12 duplex, I'm sorry.
Duplex townhouses.
Okay, and how many?
26 single homes.
Thank you.
And a 15-unit apartment building. And a mobile home lot line compliance regulation discussion was had. There was a discussion about the fire safety spacing required between mobile homes and the mobile home parks. Nuisance ordinances need to be enforced with the park owners to eliminate the acceptance of numerous rundown and poorly managed mobile home parks. And then Tiny Home Other Community Regulation report was tabled because the reporter was not at the meeting. The next meeting will be Wednesday, January 17, 6 PM at City Hall.
Any questions for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah.
You bet.
Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety will meet this Thursday, January 4, 2 PM at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Public Works, Bill, Hal?
Okay, Public Works met on Tuesday, December 27, at 1 PM at the Mueller Center. Present were myself, Bob Nelson Jr., the city administrator, and Public Works engineer, Tracy Bastian. There were no members of the public present. Under new business, as a result of the concern expressed at a previous meeting regarding trailers and RVs parked on the street after the November 1 removal deadline, the city's streets were reviewed and violators were tagged and tow dates were set. Secondly, under new business, the active and inactive project lists were reviewed and updated in preparation of establishing a 2024 work plan that aligns with the 2024 budget. There were no departmental updates provided, and in the 30-day look ahead, there's no major projects planned other than incidental road construction work and seasonal activity work. The active and inactive project information can be found on the Public Works report on the city website. Our next, we adjourned at 2:15 PM. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 9, 1 PM at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Hal, anything you want to add?
No.
Any questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Southern Hills Golf Course report, with the course being closed, we're not meeting. That'll be sometime in the spring when we'll pick those meetings up again. City Administrator report, Bob?
Nothing to report for me tonight, sir.
All right. Finance Officer report, Misty?
I have prepared the regular reports you're used to reviewing through the 27th of December. So you have your year-to-date profit and loss summary report, your fund summary report, which is budget versus actual for revenues and expenses, your cash balance report, and your investment reports. But I'd like you to note that these do not include all of the 2023 entries, and they are not final 2023 numbers. Quick review of your profit and loss summary report shows which funds year-to-date are showing gains and losses. If you have any questions about any of those, I can provide answers for you. I think that you're aware of the things that have led to any of those that are showing losses, and then for those that are showing gains, like Evans Plunge, that is showing $104,000 gain for the year, we did a really good job budgeting, and they did a really good job controlling their expenses. On the fund summary report, the budget to actual, I would point out that these are reflective of the end-of-year supplemental appropriations that you approved. So you can see that many of our funds exceeded revenue estimates, which is what we aim for, and then this time, we don't have any that are exceeding expenditures, which is also where we aim to be. So on your cash balance report, remember that is broken down by fund and gives a total, and that's for our main Wells Fargo checking account. And then your investment report includes all of the cash assets of the city, so that Wells Fargo main checking account, and then our four investment accounts that we carry. We have our Water Debt Service Reserve Fund that is maturing. It is a U.S. Treasury bond, and it matures on the 18th of January, and I will be sending out the email to South Dakota FIT and our local banks to get rates, and we'll be reporting to what I recommend that we roll that over into. On my report, I also include some information regarding some generally accepted accounting principles in the Government Accounting Standards Board, which dictate the objectives and tell us what we need to be compliant in to get a good audit report. So I kind of summarized that for you. I've gone over this before. If you have any questions about why we do certain things the way we do, please don't hesitate to ask. For the next couple months, I will be analyzing and reconciling and recording a number of journal entries that'll change these year-end numbers, and we go over all that when we go over the audit. So be prepared for me to be focusing my time and attention on those items in the next couple months. I give you an update on the year-to-date municipal sales tax collection. Overall, it's exceeded our budget projections by 12%, and it's great news, and we still have one more period that we'll collect for in 2023. I break down those increases per fund. As you know, our municipal sales tax is distributed in three different ways, so I break down how that affects each fund for you. I talk about in this batch of current claims that you approved, the donations payments that were made, so Southern Prairie Hills Transit, Shed Co., and the Senior Center all had payments in there. You saw the payments to Dispatch, that's an increased amount from previous years, and I explained the volunteer fire department, they get paid monthly, their annual subsidy of $90,000. If you have questions about the timing or anything else about these payments, please don't hesitate to ask, but we talked about all of them in our 2024 budget planning. Included in the memo is an updated committee roles and responsibilities document. And wrapping up, looking back at 2023, I am amazed again what our small but mighty city workforce was able to achieve. Like most years, we had ups and downs, wins and losses, successes and failures, and although much was achieved, there are still so many projects left lingering into 2024, and we have many new projects on the horizon as well. It's my hope that we continue working towards making both the community of Hot Springs and city government even better. Thanks for all you do to help make these things happen, and Happy New Year. And as a reminder, our next meeting will be on a Tuesday due to the Martin Luther King holiday on the 15th. Thank you.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty. Like the city administrator, I don't have anything for you tonight, so that brings us to, we don't have an executive session. So, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Discussion? Hal? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.
Carl, is the camera off?
So we're adjourned.